Call to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need some practice on that.
We're not very in sync on that.
No.
Needs some practice.
And we didn't even have Jim on speakerphone.
No, thank God.
Nice to go.
They weren't very good.
Jim was on, I was in a meeting the other day with Jim, he's doing good.
Oh, good.
He looks good.
Right, we'll go to item number two, overview of Article Two, which is the city budget, led by the city manager, Don McCloud.
So for experience purposes, I'll try to be really efficient. I think it's just us, so I don't think we have anybody on the call.
Does not appear to be.
So we will offer our comments for the purpose of creating the record. And Article Two, read, shall the voters as oppose the city council's proposed budget for FY '24 totaling $10,981,753 with an estimated municipal tax rate of $1.0068 on the ground list. And that would enter into the record the cover memo, which explains all the impact of the budget and incorporate that into the notes.
Nothing's changing.
Nothing's changed. So, and the highlights are, as you recall, the 2.3% increase in property tax revenues because of the reductions in the ground list, the translation of a 4.7% increase in the tax rate. That's the budget. Then the council adopted the warning in the budget last time we were together, and so it's been fixed.
Any questions or comments for Don?
We think there's no motion, no vote.
This is just a, yeah, it's to create an opportunity for the public to ask questions. They appear silent tonight.
Alright, so let's move on to item number three, the article regarding the fire truck.
Article Three, read, shall the city of St. Albans issue general obligation bonds or notes in amount not to exceed $835,000 for the purpose of financing the purchase of a fire truck and for the payment thereof, pledged to credit the city for this bond vote. It's proposed to be taken out for 20 years. It's a recommendation and request for the fire chief that's been bubbling up for three to five years. Would enter into the record the memo from the fire chief, which was presented at the last council meeting, led to the placement of it on the morning. In summary, we're dealing with useful life issues, which are with our major piece of fire apparatus. And it's time to go out with you all and get another one. It's about two years in the production cycle, and so we'll phase in the levying of the taxes that provide the revenues to pay the bonds over a two-year period. Which is what we discussed the last council meeting as well. It's what puts an end in the budget.
Any questions or comments? And we still don't have a delivery date.
Two years?
Two years, you know, generally speaking, but we wait to order it until we pass the budget, pass the law, pass the article.
Anyone?
You mean good fire apparatus? Keep our volunteers safe and property.
They were called on again last night.
That's one of the fear facts?
Yeah.
Yeah, so moving on from the public question.
Right.
Last, yeah, they called again, and then they were active in the manhole recovery effort, which is not our manhole. Not our plow.
So can we, oh, we want to touch on that on the business?
Yeah, sure.
So no motions necessary, everyone's good with the fire truck being on the ballot?
Don, just one quick question, does it make sense to put a fire truck on a CIP or is it just, it's just too expensive of a, of an item? Like we do cruisers now, per se.
Yeah, I don't think it does. The useful life is so much longer than a cruiser.
Yeah.
You know, it depends on your strength of your capital position overall, what you get your cash for, right? But when you can borrow at half of inflation, if you have the savings, it makes some sense. But you certainly wouldn't want to raise people's taxes in this interest rate environment just to save for something over 20 years.
Yeah, got it, got it.
Hello?
Yeah.
You're talking about the budget?
We are.
Sorry, I'm late.
You are the public.
I can't believe it. You're it. We had your participation with the school board budget back in the day. Well, don't let me interrupt.
No, that's alright.
Go ahead.
So we were talking about two articles, one is the budget and the other is a special article for a fire truck. Council Spooner had some questions about finance and everything. And then we were going to move on to other business, so this is a chance to ask some questions on the budget if you have some.
Okay.
There's a copy of it here. If you have a specific question, we can walk you through it.
Going back to that manhole situation, how is it that there's a manhole in the driveway that's not, that we don't know? It's not our responsibility?
It's a development in the town. It's about coffees, it's Eastview, right?
Oh, is that where it was, Eastview?
Yes, service is Eastview, right? So nobody's ever, not much that we've ever been in it. We think it's for cleanup, but we've never, you know, cleaned it out. It's got enough pressure on it probably that it doesn't need it that often. But it's not a regulation manhole, that's the problem. There's a reason that manholes are shaped the way they are and weigh what they are and are recessed the way they are so that plow doesn't pull them out.
I did get a report on another one, though, I was telling Tim on the way in, there was a manhole on Federal Street that the cover was off.
A regular, a regular one?
Yeah. A couple, probably a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
And it did get put back in somehow, I don't remember how.
Yeah, it was in the street.
It was in the street, yeah. A couple individuals were jogging and one almost fell in. And I'm guessing that was a plow scenario. Or what is the situation with the group around town running cable?
I was gonna say that it was on the corner of Lake and Federal, I wondered what they were doing, stayed at that manhole all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I, this is the first I've heard, right? So I don't know, I think we're all sorts of recent, I got nothing up, but. The, so the Phytium crew you're talking?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they, are they using the, what, how are they running the cable?
I wasn't aware they were using manholes.
They're, they're down, yeah, they're.
Yeah, I saw them right up here on Main Street.
Yeah, they were, I saw them right in front of off the rail lines.
They're always fenced off or locked off, it combed, and they're, they're in the. We're right out here too, to Tim's point, at the top of.
Marty's, Marty's the point of contact with them. So along for the conversation we've been here about long since it started.
I asked the individual who told me to give Marty a call after, after that one on the Eastview happened, just to make him aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there's, maybe that's connected to this one as well. Everybody that was on scene seemed to think it was a plow. Cause they were focused on the design of the cover, but maybe they hadn't considered this possibility, so passing it on. But the news coverage certainly sounded like it was a city manhole, city plow truck.
Absolutely.
Well, Bob Cross, the next job.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have any?
Are we set for Tuesday?
Yeah.
We good? Are you showing up?
I, I'd never even gotten an email asking, asking, seeing, asking for volunteers, so I never, because I was planning, because I skipped November, so I was planning on doing this one, but yeah, I never got anything.
So I'm leaving, but leaving late, I'd be able to leave here for a couple hours, about a week for a couple days. But you're gonna show, I won't?
I haven't signed up for anything.
Okay.
Nicole's running point, so.
Huh?
Nicole's running point, so.
Okay, yeah.
You haven't heard?
I've not heard it.
I didn't get asked.
I usually get asked.
Who's on the ballot? Marine?
Yeah.
Just Marine.
Okay, so you, you can.
Other business, obviously there's nothing for Tiff on the ballot. What is our thinking, is our final?
We got a year.
One year from today.
To use it, we would need to get substantial change through, through VEPSE, which is doable within that time. The most likely candidate, the best candidate is the project in back of City Hall, the housing project in District Four. So we're rapidly trying to get environmental engineering and civil engineering assessments done so that they can figure out what that might be. At some point, we might have to cut bait on the analysis and just go with the best guess and then run the VEPSE with that. It's a finer analysis now than it used to be because the retention period is only 10 years essentially, right? So.
Have you heard anything about the property on Lower Walden? The large property? The lights are on in the building, the only lights in the parking lot are the ones over by the old CBPS garage. There's a little one there that's on, no other lights in the parking lot, but the building's blowed up, but I'm just wondering if there's, if anyone even ever reaches out to us about that, nothing else?
Not yet. You know, I'm at, if you're them, you're actively trying to lease it as an office building, right? And we assume that that's what's happening.
It's a large space, kind of, I think you're gonna break it, have to break it down, but.
Yeah. I mean, at this point, I can be a little, we've had their assessment. We assume that they're working to fill it. I'm not excited to have more conversations, so at this point.
Do you have comments or questions that you?
Well, I have a couple of questions. Mine is about the pool, is, I mean, I've heard from some people who used to use the pool down by city school, the old pool, that the cost, I mean, not only getting up to the pool, but the cost of the pool for the family is prohibitive. Do, I mean, what do we have for, given the percentage of lower income folks that we have in the community to help them be able to access it? Because, I mean, I know when I was working for Family Services, the pool was a great resource, and for one thing, of keeping kids connected to the community with supervision, having fun, sometimes food, which we don't have, I mean, we don't have, with nipple, it's serving a different purpose in some respects. It's a beautiful thing. But I mean, is there any, are there any ways that lower income folks can utilize it other than, I guess, is the library pass or something? I'm saying that that's.
So there's a lot there. Logistics in terms of the distance, we ran a shuttle all last year.
Yeah, they're not gonna take the shuttle.
And nobody, nobody showed up. The daily rate in the summer is essentially the same as it was back then. So it's five bucks for the whole day.
And you can, you can come and go.
You can come and go, yeah, five bucks, you know, you drop your kids off in the morning and pick them up in the afternoon, right? You know, so.
I guess, I mean, some of the folks that I've worked with, I mean, dropping them off, getting the shuttle, I mean, what they have is something they can walk to.
Yeah.
To walk to the school. I mean, and given some of the concerns about, you know, things that are happening, kids, you know, just supervision and stuff like that, it's how to sort of maximize the new facility, which is beautiful in that respect, but I don't know, maybe it's, it's something else. I don't know that that's in the budget.
What is in the budget is the, when we passed the bond for the pool, there was a reservation of $250,000 to make improvements to Holton Park. And so those funds continue to be reserved for that project. So that's in the budget, and there's some ideas that are working their way to the Parks Commission on the, on their way to the council, and one of those involves having it continue as a free hot lunch site. And they did that last year at Holton Park as well. So, you know, the, the council and the community made a policy decision to do something different with the pool and.
Yeah, no.
Your point's well taken, that it's different than what was there before.
So Don, we do have the lot, right? And we allocate some funds of the lot for recreational activities for low-income families?
Yeah, the local option tax, bottom line, if anybody wants to go to that pool and they think that the cost is an issue, they should get in touch with the Recreation Department, and we can figure out a way to get them to spend for free. That shouldn't be an issue. The logistical challenges of, you know, aside from offering pickup at the door, which they don't even want either, right? They want to be able to walk down the street, right? And that, that ship's gone, you know?
Yeah.
So I think we're pretty open to ideas for.
I wonder, partnering with Spectrum, and maybe involving some.
Ask them, yeah.
To, you know, around how, what can be, what can be put together that's gonna actually, that people are gonna use as opposed to the city coming up with some, like the shuttle, and then people don't use it, and people complain, and then, and people don't get the service. But that somehow, I mean, it's like.
We can reach out to Spectrum, that's a good idea.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, I mean, and I'm thinking Paul Tallin and the Police Department might have some great ideas too.
Let me just jump in, there's a couple other initiatives, and I'm not sure how far you can take them down the road, but we had a call from Anna Neville's daughter.
Yeah.
Who had offered, Anna has a scholarship fund, which would pay for passes for foster kids, so any foster, did you, have you moved that forward? I know that was the end of last summer, but the discussion was to get passes where foster families could utilize them for those kids at any time, and it'd be a rotating scenario. So that, that's one thing that was discussed, and if it hasn't moved down the road, we'll, we'll see about that.
I think, I mean, I think that's, that's great, that's a need too, but I'm thinking of some of the kids, particularly with what DCF would call the family services, family support cases, where kids are at home and the work is to prevent them from coming into foster care. And I mean, there are some of the kids, I think probably people are concerned about being in the community and starting to get into trouble, being in trouble, I mean, that the school talks about is, one of the things I know from the past is the fact that those kids could walk over to the pool and the, and the people that were at the pool, the employees were marvelous, connecting with them and then being there. And I think there were some food programs at different times, and it was like, they, they could get there whether their parents could get them there or not, no matter what was happening in the family, and they were supervised, they had a good time, they might have, you know, somebody to talk to. Which, I mean, thinking about other, other issues that we want to address as a city, I mean, just the supervision. But, but you're right, the pool is now something, it's beautiful, it's something different, I mean, it's a different process, there's ways, I'm glad to hear, of making it available to kids who don't have money. But some of it is, I mean, some of it is what people do for work, I mean, they're not necessarily, you don't have somebody there to drive them or to take them there, I mean, and that's why the other pool did. But, I mean, there's a willingness to work on that, so I mean, it's like, I think it's probably somehow connect, uh, who, connecting.
Are you getting any direct feedback, or are you just?
No, I, I mean, there was a guy that, since I retired from DCF, I now do what family support work with kids who, parents who are, kids have been removed, and the kids return, and talking with a couple of other folks that I've worked with about, you know, so now that the kids are home, what can you do, how do you get out? I mean, there's, it's just hard, I mean, some of the programs that exist in the city are, some people don't feel comfortable. I mean, there's the, a difference. And so it's how to make what is being provided accessible to them where they feel comfortable. Is, and we don't want to have two, two tiers of, you know, recreational activities, it's, because there's a benefit of kids with resources and whatever, being with kids who don't, I mean, it works out at the school. I mean, my, my kids all went to Aden Shanyos, I mean, it's like that's, they learned a lot from one another, it's good. City doesn't have the money to have a million different things, don't worry. But yeah, I have heard from. And in fact, one of the fathers that was talking about actually used to go for the pool when he was a kid.
I think we're all, you know. You can email me anytime, we can, if you have ideas, you know, I think the conversation inferring it maybe shifts away from the pool and more to what can we do for disadvantaged youth in those neighborhoods, right? And we, we ask that question all the time.
I bet you.
In our department meetings, and frankly, we're not great at it, you know, so if somebody could come up with an idea, we welcome it.
I mean, I think it's, I don't know who off the top of my head, it's a community thing, we bring people together to think about recreational programs, I mean, about, I'm sure that some of the people at the school would have some great suggestions.
We welcome all of that, and I think I can respect you for that idea.
Just along the same line, I think the city school's done an outstanding job with their summer camps. I don't know how the, how long that funding will last, a lot of it was COVID dollars, but I believe this summer they're continuing on with that as well. The amount of, the numbers that have participated at the city school has, has been very impressive.
Yeah.
And whether they can connect to, to bring those kids to the pool during their, during those camps at some point would be a start, I believe. But, you know, I can say from experience, my, my son had a, has a friend who doesn't have a lot of resources, and he went to the pool one day and brought, he had a Ziploc bag full of quarters to pageant it in. And I called Don McKelley and they got him a pass right off the same day. So I think it's just a matter of two things, people feeling comfortable to make the call and, and reaching out, and then the city acting on it. I think, I think we're prepared to act on it if we, if we do get the calls, and I know that's only one piece of the puzzle, but.
Well, I mean, I think, I think it's a great piece, because the thing is, I mean, if some of the agencies know that that is available, you mean that, there's, the people might call if the word gets out that it isn't, that they, people came to the pool and there was the shuttle that nobody was using, that actually pool's there for whoever wants to swim, and that the city is willing to work with everybody to make it happen. I don't know, I don't know, I didn't know that that was true. So it's like, to get that word out, but.
Yeah, we do it all the time.
Great.
And just to tell a little bit, I did receive a question from someone stating that they were told, or they heard maybe secondhand, that a grandparent or a parent could not go in and watch their children swim without paying. It didn't sound right to me. I thought that was, I thought they had always opened it up for parents to be with them without paying.
In the wintertime or summertime?
This was a recent complaint, within the last, probably within two months, so first of the year. But personally, I don't think we should be charging anyone that's not actually utilizing the pool. So, and I haven't, that was on my list to talk to you about.
Okay.
If you can just check with Kelly on that.
Sure.
And it didn't seem right, but I'm not familiar with all the policies either. Did you have, you said you had a few questions or?
Well, then what happened with the fire engine? What did you decide?
Well, it's on, it's on the ballot.
It's on the ballot?
So it's, the way we did it was the approval, the, to get a new fire engine, there's a lengthy backlog of two years, so we broke the, I think it was $816,000. We put $430,000 in this budget and $430,000, assuming it gets approved, we'll go into the next budget, next year's budget as well. So we split, split it to costs between the two years, assuming it gets approved.
Those are my questions.
Nothing else?
Well, you know what, I'll read this all very closely.
Tonight before you go.
And I'll send, Tim the question.
Yeah, Jan, I did give, it took a lot to give up the hope of having the pool still in the neighborhoods. I don't know how many properties I sent Don to go search out once he didn't even, he wasn't even aware of, so we tried. It just, if we wanted a year-round pool, wasn't it gonna happen in the neighborhoods?
Yeah, I mean, and I mean, it's, Pardec is, I mean, it's grown into a great place other than a good hill to slide on, so I mean, it's like, but finding other recreational opportunities and painting pickleball stripes on tennis court at Holton Park would be great.
That's in the plan.
Okay.
Plan is to build a, to rebuild the tennis court, make it pickleball courts and improve the basketball courts as well, and then right in the middle of the space there to build sort of a large shelter and gathering place that really connects with some of the uses that are down there, that provides good viewing for the Swedish football and is built to be a free hot lunch site. So that could also, so once that's there, that can become, you know, a node or a basis for programming.
And usable bathrooms.
And usable bathrooms, yeah, yeah. And we, we spent a lot of time looking at improving the playground itself, and the feedback we got was that something in this direction would be more well-received. So that ship hasn't sailed, we'll try to, remember to send you a note some when we're talking about that, see if you have some ideas. See if you have some ideas.
Okay. So you all go home now? Or do you have to stay until a certain time, make sure nobody else goes up?
Twelve questions, I think, right? What we gotta get, so...
No, we have to, 50 people have to come in.
There's nothing on TV?
So now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you, Jan. All, we have a motion to adjourn, all of us say the same.
Aye.
And when opposed, that's all.